I have coke and Dr. Pepper and Sprite in there.
This doesn't go back far enough. On building permits in 2010.
Have you been on the Smith? You've done it before.
Built a house for $103 a square foot.
Oh, really?
It was like six. I was like, what is six? Seriously? Everybody was like, oh, I'll do it.
You ready, guys and girls? All right, it is, uh, big hand is on the 12, so we'll call to order the February 16th, um, meeting of the Whitefish City County, City Planning Board. Uh, can we get a roll call, please, Kenny?
Good evening. Whitney Beckham is absent. Scott Friedenberger. John Middleton.
Present.
Chris Gardner.
Here.
Allison Linville.
Here.
Steve Cornell.
Here.
And Toby Scott is absent.
Okay, uh, the first order on the agenda, first item on the agenda is planning board appointments for the planning board chair is the first one, and then the planning board vice chair is the second one. Anybody have any ideas?
I'd like to nominate Steve to be the chair again.
Thank you, I will accept.
I'd second.
I'll accept that nomination.
You're very good at it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll be happy to serve in this position again. Um, do we need to vote on them separately? Probably, huh? Okay, so, uh, any discussion on that? Those in favor, uh, raise your hand. Okay, it passes unanimously, and we have selection of the vice chair. Any ideas?
I'd like to nominate, uh, John Middleton to be the vice chair.
I would second that.
Use your mic there, John. You just turned it off.
I am the newest person here.
You've been around. Um, do you accept the, the nomination, John?
Unless anyone else, uh, unless there are any other nominations, yes, I will.
Okay, uh, any more discussion on that? I think you'll do a fine job. Job, John. Uh, okay, those in favor, raise your hand. Uh, opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Did you raise your hand? I didn't see your hand raised.
No, I didn't know I was allowed to vote.
Yeah, you're allowed to vote. You're on the board. Okay, I, maybe there was one abstention there, I'm not sure, Kenny. Oh, okay, passes unanimously. Uh, the next item is agenda changes. Um, we don't really, we only have one item on the agenda, so we won't, uh, have any changes, and then approval of the minutes of the November 17th, 2022 meeting. And I get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 17th meeting.
Any changes?
I'll second.
Um, yeah, let's, so just, the mics are directional, so keep them pointed at your mouth when you, um, when you're speaking into it. Don't bend it down. There we go. Um.
I'll second.
Okay, it was moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any changes? Okay, uh, those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, okay, that passes unanimously. Kenny, did you get who moved and seconded? Thank you. Communications from the public, uh, for items not on the agenda, I would like to welcome our city councillor, Ms. Rebecca Norton. Hi, Rebecca.
Hi, you guys. Rebecca Norton, 530 Scott Avenue. Um, I'm gonna try to come to the planning board for the growth policy updates. And I was talking to, um, sorry, I forgot I had gum in my mouth, um, to, um, Dave today about, um, somehow incorporating the zoning upgrading into the growth policy too, so, um, we just have, I've heard three different, people talking about our zoning needing to be upgrading, so I'm just planting a seed. Um, Dave has reminded me that the growth policy is the very large picture, and that zoning comes in sometimes, um, much later. But if you can think that way while we're doing that, I think it would help. And thanks for taking this project on.
Thanks, Rebecca. It's good to see you. Uh, outside of a Monday or Tuesday. Um, anyone else? There's no one else in the audience. We're not online, are we, Dave? Are we online? I mean, are we on, we're not?
Taking comments online, but we're broadcast on YouTube now, so.
All right. Uh, okay, so we will move on to the next item. There's no unfinished business, which brings us to our public hearing for this evening, a request by the City of Whitefish for zoning text amendment for fences and retaining walls. Dave?
Yeah, good evening. So about two years ago, um, we brought an amendment to you guys at the behest of the city council. Um, there was, um, a property over kind of by city beach where someone was building a daylight basement, and they built a retaining wall right up to the property line. Parts of the neighboring property sloughed, including some fruit trees and things like that. The council decided that, um, they wanted to limit the heights of retaining walls in setbacks. And so we brought forward a code amendment that did that. Um, however, some of the language in that was maybe the clearest. And after that, we've had some comments from some landscape architects, um, someone who had built some stuff in a setback illegally. That sort of challenged how the language was written. We had some, uh, administrative challenge go to the board of adjustment, and the board of adjustment said, you know, we agree with the staff's interpretation, but yeah, you guys could make a couple changes to make it clearer. And so we decided to bring this, just a minor code amendment to you guys, um, that sort of clarifies what, uh, how retaining walls, um, or exemptions are given for egress for driveways, um, for walkways and things like that, in which cases there might be exemptions. And so, um, currently, uh, any retaining wall up to two feet high is not regulated. It can be anywhere on the property. Um, two feet to four feet have to meet the six-foot accessory building setback. Um, previously in the code, it just said meet accessory building setbacks, and that's not real clear, so we wanted to make it clear that it's six feet is that accessory building setback. And then, you know, any, you can go up to eight foot, or right now, the maximum height of a retaining wall is four feet, but in special circumstances, you can go to eight feet, um, for primary vehicle access, required parking, or pedestrian egress. So, and then one of the things that we didn't have was, um, definitions of finished grade or natural grade anywhere in the code. Um, and we use that term, both of those terms quite often in there, and, um, one of the things that has been discussed, if somebody builds a retaining wall too high, I was like, well, I'll just dump some dirt next to it, and so that I can measure down to where the, you know, the little slope of dirt is, and then I'll meet the setback. Well, that's not really the intent of that, is to have a slope of dirt, and that be what we consider, you know, finished grade. And so we put together a definition of finished grade that, that says the average elevation of the finished surface of the ground measured one foot out from the base of the exterior foundation of a building, or the average elevation of the finished surface of the ground at the base of a structure, which would be like a retaining wall, measured one foot out exclusive of any artificial embankment at the base of such building or structure. And then a definition of natural grade, which is the elevation of the undisturbed natural surface of the ground prior to any excavation or fill or erection of structures. And so that way, we have some baseline to go from when we're determining, you know, what we're measuring from on these things. And so as far as the actual changes, um, within, on page two of the staff report in the red, you can see some of the language that we added in there, just to clarify it. So, um, retaining walls in section 2A, retaining walls above two feet and up to four feet in height measured from adjacent downhill grade must, and then we inserted have a setback of at least six feet from the property line, instead of meet accessory building setbacks, which I mentioned, and then, um, retaining walls exceeding four feet in height measured from adjacent finished downhill grade must meet required principal building setbacks from the zoning district, or for the zoning district. Principal building is a term used more often than primary building. I don't know where that came from, but, um, and then the next section, retaining walls necessary to accommodate minimum off-street required parking or primary vehicle or pedestrian access to a building, so if it's the only place you can put required parking, then you could do a retaining wall, as long as it's not in a setback, um, that's higher. But if you already have the on-street parking, you can't just build it for overflow parking, for instance. Such retaining walls are not subject to terracing, but must meet all setback requirements based on the wall height, as noted above, with the exception that retaining wall is necessary for primary vehicle access or minimum required off-street parking are not subject to a front yard setback. And that's similar to what it was before. We don't, you know, the front setback is normally where the driveway comes into a property. A lot of times where, you know, people park is in that, in their driveways, and so, um, obviously, we wouldn't necessarily penalize somebody for having something in their front setback, because if they need that to access their lot with a steep slope. And then on the section three, we just added if the retaining wall is not located within required setbacks on a particular project, just to clarify that there's, you know, certain exceptions for unique land features, but it's for areas that are not in a setback, to be able to go up to eight feet in height. So that's kind of the gist of it. You know, otherwise it meets our requirements of being in accordance with the growth policy and the other things with a text amendment, so staff does recommend approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Questions for Dave?
Yeah, Dave? What is driving this to happen right now? Have you had some?
Yeah, as I mentioned, there was, you know, so over the last couple of years, we've had some landscape architects call us with lots of questions about what does this mean? When can I have an exception? We had actually two different variances on retaining walls go to the board of adjustment, where someone needed to put us something in a setback, and they were, you know, designed it because they were unclear about it, and then we actually had a, someone that built something in a setback where, um, we had an enforcement action against them, and they appealed the zoning administrative decision of how we interpret it to go there. So there's just been some confusion over this, and we just decided to take care of it quickly, since it was a pretty simple fix.
Okay, um, so it's not actually changing any of the limitations to property then?
Nope, we're just clarifying it. Yep.
Right, we're not changing what existed as the setback.
And then, and we are actually broadening it a little bit by adding in the, um, required parking. So if you have to build it to put required parking in there, you're able to. So that's, so we're actually broadening that part of it, but we're just clarifying the rest of it.
This would, so if we vote on this, it goes to council, it goes into effect immediately after the council's vote?
So the council would have two hearings on it, just like a zone change, so they have, they would, you know, have a staff report, review it, and then it would go on the consent agenda on their next meeting, and then it doesn't go into effect for 30 days.
So realistically, if we voted on today, the public would have 30 days plus a week, is that right?
Thirty, yeah, I mean, it'd be going to them at the beginning of March, and the second meeting in March, whenever that is, the 17th, and that wouldn't go into effect till middle of April.
Okay. Okay.
Scott?
I've just got two quick questions, Dave. Um, railings, are any railings addressed anywhere? Like if you have any?
So railings are allowed over a certain, you know, required of the retaining walls over a certain height for the building, within the building code. We don't address that in the zoning, because it's a building code issue, but.
And then, um, sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but you're talking about where your measurement from. Isn't the height of a building in the standards from natural grade? Should it, should the height measurement be the same as how we do the building?
So for, when we measure a building height, it's from natural grade, so before you build anything. It's from that point to the highest point of the building. But we don't, again, we don't have a definition in there, so this kind of helps with that, because we've had people question, well, what does that mean? So, yeah, we're adding definition that will, you know, doesn't change anything, it just clarifies it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, um, this is a public hearing, so we'll open the, open, we will open the public hearing on this matter. Uh, if you'd like to speak on the matter, come on up.
Rebecca Norton, 530 Scott Avenue. Um, I'm in a unique situation. My house is 116 years old, and I, um, found out that my neighbor had built a retaining wall on my property. But because it wasn't surveyed at the time that I bought my house, um, it's about a foot and a half to two feet onto my property, and so I'm in negotiations with the adjacent neighbor about what to do about it. It came up because they put a, a fence along, um, the back part of the property, and then there was a huge gap between my property and where they had asked me to take down my fence, and so I'm, um, the first thing that my neighbors came up with was something called adverse possession, where they have the right to take my property, um, because they bought it, um, with that retaining wall in place. And so, um, there's some stability issues with replacing the retaining wall. But we're talking about this, so I'm just wondering how this finding number nine that says that historical uses and established use patterns and recent change in use trends will be weighed equally and considered and not be given to one to the exclusion of the other. So, um, wondering if there's a way to address, um, we weren't really platted too well when we first started our town, so there's things that have happened over the years that need to get corrected, but I, I just wonder about that finding, if it's, um, gonna harm people like me.
Thanks, Rebecca. Bob, anything to say about retaining walls? Okay, uh, we will close the public hearing then, and, um, throw it to the board for more discussion or motion. Be shy.
I'll make a motion to approve WZTA 23-01.
I'll second it.
Great, it's moved and seconded. Um, Dave, would you like to speak to Rebecca's question really quickly?
Well, I mean, this would not affect any existing retaining walls in the city, only new ones that are being built. Yeah, I mean, something like that would be a property owner dispute between two property owners. Um, but in the future, no one would be able to build a retaining wall over two feet in a setback. So, you know, it would hopefully prevent something like that from happening.
Okay, thanks. Any further discussion on this matter? Okay, uh, those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and passes unanimously, which brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is good and welfare matters from the board. Any matters from the board? Uh, I would just like to, even though he's not here tonight, I would like to thank John Ellis for his service on this board for a number of years. I don't know how many years. It was a lot, and, uh, we hope he's enjoying himself in his retirement from the planning board. Okay, matters from staff?
I'm just wanna introduce our new long-range planner, Alan Tiefenbach. If you haven't met him, this is his first planning board meeting. Um, we also hired another planner, Luke Spawnable, who will be our housing coordinator and long-range planner. He doesn't officially start full-time until July, but, um, he may be attending a few meetings, you know, via Zoom prior to that.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome, Alan. It's good to, so is our staff full now again?
We are.
For, until Missoula poaches somebody else? Okay, all right, wow. Uh, how'd you do that? Okay, um, great. Uh, our next meeting is March, what, 16th? Oh, right, it's the one where it's the same number. Uh, anybody not gonna be here on the 16th? I'm not sure yet either, but I'm, no, I'm not. I'm sure I'll be here. Um, yes, I'll be here for that. Okay, uh, and then we'll find, we'll probably have to ask online, can you, whoever does that, Dave, we just find out from, uh, the two people who aren't here, whether they'll be here on the 16th.
Yeah, we'll probably send something out just to verify.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Uh, all right, so that, um, with that, if I could get a motion to adjourn to our work session, I'd appreciate it.
Move to adjourn to our work session.
Okay, I think it just needs to be seconded, and it, and it will happen?
I'll second.
Okay, so we will adjourn to our work session. The first item on the agenda here is, uh, the upcoming landscape chapter revision introduction. So I assume that's you, Dave, or is that?
It's gonna be Alan.
Oh, Alan. Wow, you're already doing it.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. Forgive me if I keep using the word commission. Um, if, if I may very quickly introduce myself again, so I'm Alan Tiefenbach. Um, I've been here six months as of yesterday, which is kind of unused, uh, hard to believe. Uh, I come to you after an 18-year, uh, career in city planning in Colorado, uh, working for rural and mountain towns there, and two years in the Boise area most recently. And prior to that, I was five years as a Navy Beachmaster in the amphibious arm of the military. So I'm very excited to be here, and thank you for the welcome. Okay, so, uh, this, we are working on revisions to the landscape code. I'd literally been here about a day, and Dave said, here you go. Um, the last time that any revisions to this were done were, uh, 2008. And this has been discussed since at least 2017 with the city council. Uh, it was subsequently listed as a city council goal in 2022. Uh, so the middle of summer of 2022 is really when I got started on this. It's important to notice that, um, what is being proposed is a significant change from the existing code. Because of that, uh, the, the idea of giving you red-marked, uh, red-marked draft didn't work, because there were so many things being moved around and taken away and moved, it was impossible, really. It's a complete rewrite of the landscape code. Are you able to see what I've got here? Okay. So real quick on the process, what, what happened is that I reviewed the landscaping regulations for seven different Montana municipalities, so those will be the larger ones in Montana, six cities in the Northwest, five city and county governments in Colorado, and several other cities that had robust landscape regulations, such as Savannah, Georgia. Uh, I also then reviewed the existing regulations, I reconstructed and rewrote them, and we had five internal meetings with various departments of staff, and that included Parks and Rec and Public Works. We then sent this draft to 12 different landscape firms and botanists that are familiar with the City of Whitefish and with Montana, Florida in general, uh, for their review and comment. Uh, I'm happy to say that most of the, actually, all of the comments that I received were very minor. Uh, it'd be very easy to incorporate into the draft as it is. The, the feedback I've gotten has been overwhelmingly positive. Depending on the comments of the planning board and the city council, staff would be scheduling this matter for a formal public hearing starting in April. I'm gonna just give you kind of a brief 10,000-foot overview of what's being proposed. So again, like I said, it's been completely reorganized. If you've looked at the, the current landscaping code, it's pretty wonky, and it's difficult to, to be able to use. Uh, the first thing that we did is that we took all the basic landscaping requirements, the general requirements, and we put them in tables and moved them to the front of the book. I just put a picture of sort of an example of what the tables look like, but it basically will say things like, um, parking lot requirements, when is it applicable, uh, what are the landscaping requirements? Most people, when they're working on a project, they just wanna know very quickly, what do I have to do? So this was intended to make it easier to see. Uh, the new, the new landscape requirements apply to everything except for, except for single-family detached. There were some actually direction from the council, uh, to look at that, because previously duplexes and fourplexes were, duplexes, triplexes, and four, duplexes and triplexes were not incorporated into the existing regulations, so you weren't able, you didn't have to follow them. Now, now, these would incorporate that. Um, there are new requirements. Uh, one of them is for a building, for landscaping building perimeters, uh, which is presently not required. Uh, there's residential buffers that are somewhat discussed in the regulations, but not very clearly. Uh, there's a new requirement for street frontages, and there's internal parking lot islands that are now required. If you look in the existing parking lot, uh, regulations, uh, that's where the landscaping regulations are now, but there is nothing in there at all about parking lot internal landscaping. Uh, we have, uh, much more detail in what is required for a landscape plan. Uh, under the present code, it really says a site plan, and it's not very much in there. Uh, there's descriptions and requirements for a percentage of the landscaping to be drought tolerant and native to Montana. There was quite a bit of discussion with this, uh, among staff and parks, and, uh, it was, it was unanimously agreed that we should be trying to encourage more drought tolerant landscaping, especially given the climate change that we're dealing with. Uh, the landscape standards now are based on, on new standards, such as lengths of frontages, sizes of parking lots, building perimeter lengths, et cetera. The current standards are based on some kind of strange dimensions, like 22,000 square feet and above, and we're not even sure where that 22,000, 22,000 square foot comes from. It doesn't correlate with any of our minimum or maximum lot sizes. So instead, we're doing it on performance standards, lengths of buildings, lengths of frontages, those kinds of things. There's also numerous different places in our existing code where there's landscaping requirements that are kind of scattered about, and they're difficult to find. Uh, so we went through all of the existing regulations, and we're moving anything relating to landscaping into this code, go figure, to make it easier to find. Uh, so that's including, again, the off-street parking and loading, the multifamily standards, the mixed-use and non-residential standards. There's also specific standards in the landscape code and in some of the zoning, uh, the individual zone districts, such as, uh, WB, or B2, B3, uh, RB1. So there's actually specific land use sta, or specific landscaping standards in these sections, and we're actually bringing those in too, so everything is all in the one place. In fact, there's some, some specific requirements, uh, for the B2 zoning district in the landscape code now that I'm not really sure why only apply to, to B2. Uh, certain things like street frontages and buffers, and why wouldn't those apply to all the commercial properties? So we, we looked at trying to compile all this into one code. Uh, the other thing I think is pretty significant is the tree preservation. Uh, under the existing code, there's a very difficult standards, if you've never tried to use them. It talks about like minimum tree densities being 16 trees per acre, and then there's tables with different tree credits that you have to try to figure out how to use. Uh, we were looking at, we, we looked at many different codes. I, I looked at 20 different municipalities around the United States to kind of figure out what they were doing with tree preservation standards, as well as having meetings with our Parks and Rec and our, and our arborist. We prefer to go with a simpler approach. Uh, simpler is better. Uh, what this does is, this really says that there's two different kinds of, there, there's what we're calling qualifying trees. And qualifying trees are any evergreens with a caliper greater than 12 inches, a deciduous tree with a caliper greater than six inches, and that's measured at diameter at breast height, so that means four feet high. Uh, and then any other trees that are determined as significant by the zoning administrator. So if it's like associated with a historic event, or there's something specific about that tree. But in general, those are the trees that would be qualified for pres, for preservation under this new code. The way that this would work is that each qualifying tree removed must be replaced with two trees totaling at least two times the caliper inches. So if you remove a six, if you remove a six-inch tree, then you have to plant at least 12 caliper inches as replacement. If you preserve any trees that are qualifying trees, then you get to count those trees towards your landscaping requirement. So if you have to put in 10 trees, and you've preserved one tree that, that is a qualifying tree, a large pine, for instance, that can count as two trees when you move forward your landscape plan. Uh, one thing that was important is flexibility was built into this. Uh, there's, being the forested environment that we have, some lots, this is easier than others. If you've got a lot with no trees, it's very easy to do development, but what about some of these lots that are heavily forested? We're, we're well aware of that. So there is a relief valve built into this. Um, if you cannot meet these requirements, then there's some findings you can meet, it's in the code, that talks about, um, whether it's really prohibiting development, whether you have viable options, those kinds of things. And you have the option of requesting to the zoning administrator to have some relief from having to plant those, those required trees. Again, if it's actually prohibiting development. So, so it's not intended to say you can't meet your highest density, or, um, it's something to do with blocking the view. It's more if you can't develop your property because of this requirement, and it's not feasible to plant these trees. If the arborist agrees, then you don't have to.
Can, can I pause you there? Since this is a work session, it's a little more informal. We can ask questions whenever we want, um, just so you all know. Couple of questions about that. So in terms of tree preservation, uh, does that include non-native species as well? Because I know that there's a ton of apple trees around, a lot of old ones, but they're not, obviously not native to this area.
As it is right now, as far as tree preservation goes, it doesn't talk about native. It just talks about the caliper, so the older trees. So if it's 12 inches and it's, uh, evergreen, or if it's six inches or greater and it's deciduous, then you're required to preserve it.
Okay, um, thanks. Uh, and then, in terms of administering this, uh, you know, if we have a heavily forested lot, you said it just goes to the zoning administrator to make a determination whether or not they, they can become free of this? Or how does that work?
So there are individual findings, um, if you want, let's see, I have it open. So there are individual findings, if you want. Let's see, I have it open, I think. So there's individual findings that would need to be made. Obviously, if you didn't agree with the zoning administrator, I think we wrote it in that you could go to the, did we say the Board of Adjustment or the city council? So it's here, Relief from Replacement Requirements. So in the event that preservation and replacement is impractical, the applicant may request that the zoning administrator grant relief. And it says that such a relief may include, must include a statement from an arborist that inadequate area exists for healthy growth of those trees. So it's not feasible to be able to plant those trees. It would be considered impractical when it prevents the development of streets, utilities, community housing, those kinds of things. There's a comment about that, if there's an inability to achieve maximum permitted density, that's not really being called a hardship, basically. So we purposely wrote in a relief valve, knowing that there's going to be some lots that are heavily forested that they may not be able to replace all the trees.
Okay. And does that... I'm just wondering how that, how that then gets administered on the property? Like, how many trees are they allowed to take out before, you know, how many are, if you get the... Does the, does the plan have to be, does the plan get approved by the zoning administrator? Because it starts at the zoning administrator. And if they disagree, I mean, if the zoning administrator agrees with their plan, then it doesn't go anywhere else. There's no public say or anything like that. That's, that's just the question. I'm just trying to figure out, so how, how many trees do they, do they get to remove versus not remove, and it's just the zoning administrator that makes that determination? I'm a little confused about that.
So first of all, you can appeal this. That's at the bottom of administration, and if you don't agree with what the zoning administrator said, then you can appeal this to the Board of Adjustment, just like any other cases.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that scenario. I'm worried about the other one where they come in and maybe their plan wouldn't pass muster in a public hearing, but the zoning administrator allows it.
So this, they would have to come in with a landscape plan, and if you look in what the standards are for a landscape plan, one of the things it talks about is tree preservation and whether or not they can do this. They would have to actually have an arborist show or testify to why they were not able to do this. So you can't just say, "I can't do it because I can't put in ten trees." You'd have to be able to, you'd have to be able to justify, and the zoning administrator would have to agree that you actually can't do those trees. So he does have the option of granting.
Yeah, be part of a tree preservation plan, and they would outline all these particular trees. I mean, this is the only place that we can put the access in because of where, you know, Public Works has said we have to access the site, you know, or, you know, it's the only flat spot on the property, and that's where the building pads of the, you know, uses has to go, you know, those types of things. And then we've reviewed that, and, you know, and go out and do a site visit and verify that, yeah, okay, these trees kind of have to come down because, you know, there's nothing else they can do.
Okay. I'm just worried about it being used as a loophole to get around the rest of the zoning requirement.
Understood, but again, that's why they actually have, there's some language in it that says that actually have to have an arborist testify that they won't grow there. You can't do it. It's not reasonable.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on this part? Are you done with that whole section on tree preservation, or we still got a little more to go? Sorry, I kind of short-circuited the conversation.
No worries at all.
It's a work session.
Yeah, no, not, not really. The only thing, I guess the only thing I was gonna say is, so the new landscape, because the new landscape code includes merging existing requirements from other sections, if this, if this code is implemented, then there's going to be other sections that will have to be updated accordingly. So there'll be, there'll be, we won't do a whole rewrite of these other sections. It'll just be some stuff that has to be deleted or some references. That will all come in front of you. So when we get to the point where we're actually at the formal readings, I will make sure that all of the accompanying sections of where it's being moved out to, moved out of will be part of that, so you'll be able to see that. Again, so that's mostly deleting landscape requirements out of other sections and moving them into this one. So yeah, the next thing would be, depending on what happens here, and depending on what happens with the council work session, we would be planning to bring this to you in April or May.
Awesome. Thanks. Thanks, Alan. Questions for Alan at this point?
Yeah, real quick. So caliper is circumference? Is that what that means in this case?
It's diameter. So, so if you're, so standing at diameter at breast height, which is basically four feet, you're measuring across that tree. So it's twelve inches is a pretty big pine tree.
Under the new tree preservation requirements, so I guess it would be the second item down, requirements apply to evergreen trees, which are at least twelve inches in caliper, deciduous trees, which are six inches, also in caliper then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Also, when we define arborist, how does the city define that? Is that national accreditation or?
Wow, I might defer to Mr. Taylor.
I don't know if we define that. I mean, obviously you'd have to be a licensed arborist. I mean, I'm not sure what the...
I think that's maybe something we should call out.
Licensed arborist, yeah.
So you're saying out of definition, sir?
Just say licensed arborist.
Yeah, I would think so. I don't know if it's national, is it state?
Yeah, I mean, there's an arborist group that you have to go get certified for, I'm sure, so.
Okay.
Good point.
Other questions? Comments?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I have two sort of points that I'm interested in your consideration on. I, I feel like we haven't had very good luck with tree preservation as a city, and so I'm wondering if there's any consideration of more clearly defining the consequences or the purpose for it, or how can we make it more clear that it's a requirement and also have some sort of a, I don't know, consequence that enforces, for enforcement? Because it almost feels silly to be talking about it if developers are just going to continue ignoring it.
We thought about that a lot, so.
So in regard to what you're saying, I'm waiting for this to come back up. We do have some language in the applicability statement in the beginning that talks about the purpose of this, one of it being tree preservation. We also have a little language in the beginning here. In the old, or, in the existing code, there actually isn't anything regarding penalty if you remove tree. Under the new code, there actually is. That was one of the directions that we were actually given. Trying to get us down there. Let's see.
On the performance standards.
Yeah, let me look. Oh, yeah, so unlawful removal of a qualifying tree designated in the tree preservation plan for retention will result in either a municipal infraction of a fine equal to one hundred fifty percent of the valuation as determined by the Council of Tree and Landscape, Tree and Landscapers Appraisal Guide, so that's sort of the guide that they use, or replacement of the tree. So under our current code, you can cut down a tree, and really, we can't do anything to you. Under this new code, if you cut down the tree, you can get a fine, or you will have to replace the tree.
That, how is that penalty decided on?
When you say decided on, you're talking about the fee?
Just, yeah, for the one hundred and fifty percent of the valuation.
So there's a, again, there's this Council of Tree and Landscapers Appraisal Guide, and it's a book that they use that says how much a tree is worth. It's sort of the standard. I'm not a landscape architect, so I'll be, won't sound like I know too much about this. This was recommended through Parks. It uses this to figure out how they evaluate the price of trees.
Okay.
So whatever, that's, that's the standard that is used. So whatever that standard says is a twelve-foot pine tree of this species, then that amount, one hundred and fifty percent of that amount is what you'd have to pay.
Okay. I'm just interested in that because I think we all know that a lot of times it comes to the cost to the developer. Is the fine less than they would, you know, is that relative to the cost of going around it? Is the issue that we come up against?
Well, it's, it says actually that it could also be a municipal infraction. So that should certainly be an argument for the city attorney, I think, could think about. Whether, whether it was, well, I don't care because it's only going to be five hundred dollars and it saves me a thousand dollars, or whether the city attorney actually decides to move forward with civil action.
Okay, I'm glad that was a consideration. I'm sure that's been discussed.
Been a lot of discussion about that in one particular project.
And then, my other just thought for consideration is the kind of balance between discussing tree preservation and then also in some way discussing the wildland urban interface that we live in and wildfire concerns and landscaping associated with creating some kind of a barrier for that. Has that been a consideration in the overview of this?
Have you got anything to add? I mean, we have requirements in our building code about defensible space and stuff, but that's a really good point. We should probably make sure that if people are removing trees to create defensible space, it doesn't somehow penalize them in this code.
Yeah, and that it's the flip of that, that it's not, you know, removing trees and saying it's for defensible space either. But then also managing landscaping in a way that, that does create that. I think of in Cordillane, they, you know, they have nice landscaping, but the reality is that it's a really big risk factor that's not managed or considered in the city. And so that might be something to look into with this as well.
I think that's a super good point, and we can look at one that I didn't consider. And I think that we can look at making some little tweaks to the tree preservation. Something like if you're doing defensible space, it's as directed by the fire marshal, then something like that, some kind of exemption. Very good point.
Or also that landscaping would take that into consideration with, you know, distance from buildings and things like that. Thanks.
Scott, do you have some questions?
Yeah, just one. When this document's done, how does it integrate with the architectural review? Because they get their own landscaping plans submitted for, you know, obviously anything that's not single-family detached like you talked about. So are we gonna have one document here and another document here with different people looking at it? Or does this get into the guidelines there somehow?
It looks like Dave wants the answer. There is some language in our, there is some language. So Karen had the same comment, who's our city engineer. Based on that, we actually added some language that the plans need to be consistent. What you submit for your drainage plan, what you submit for your erosion plan, what you submit for other plans, all have to be, you can't submit one plan for one thing and one plan for another thing.
Right, and you can't have different areas asking for different things.
Correct. We purposely did that.
Yeah, what he said. Yeah, sometimes it will, somebody will submit something for ARC review, and then we'll get a totally different plan when it comes in for...
Under the current code, we don't even have a description of what you have to submit. It was just called a site plan.
Just real quick on the enforcement once again. So back to the one hundred and fifty percent valuation of the Council for Tree Landscape Appraisal Guide. Can we get, like, for instance, a twelve-inch caliper tree, what is that worth? Do we, do we know that a hundred bucks, fifty bucks, thousand bucks?
Here, I don't know. I don't know today.
I feel like that would be good to know so we know the kind of penalty that they would be facing.
We can add that to the staff report when we bring that in.
I can see if I can get, bring a copy or something.
Because it speaks back to the developer. If it's twenty bucks a tree, cut them all down, you know.
It's quite a bit more than that, but.
On that point, did Parks come up with the one hundred and fifty percent number?
It was cumulative. We, there was, I mean, I can't remember exactly who said it. There was twenty of us all sitting in a room together.
Well, I mean, why not?
Came from some of that.
Five hundred percent or something. I mean, that's, I guess, somebody must know those numbers and determine that.
Some of those numbers are pretty high. They're like, you know, a really large tree could be worth up to like ten thousand bucks, so.
Okay. And then my other, my only other comment is I would like to see, I'd like to know a little bit more about not having to preserve, and this kind of speaks a little bit to the previous comment about defensible space. I'd like to see a little more work done on the non-native part of this. I don't, I would hope that we wouldn't expect people to preserve non-native trees just because, because they can, they can cause all kinds of other problems, and they may have already been causing other problems, and it might actually be a benefit to remove them, particularly apple trees because of they, they attract bears and all those kind of things.
So are we talking about more of, are we talking non-native, or are we talking more of a noxious species? Because we do have language about that now. We don't have it in the existing code. We do have some language that talks about noxious species, but if we're talking about non-native, that's different.
Yeah, I think we need to have, I think we need to have a definition or some kind of relief for not having to replant new trees by, because you removed a non-native species. Not just a noxious species, but a non-native. I don't, I mean, I don't see the benefit in us preserving non-native trees, to be honest with you.
I can certainly circle back with our arborist and ask about that.
Okay. Any other comments from us?
Just, did you guys look at all the exceptional trees? I guess it's kind of at the discretion of the planning board if something, you know, you have a huge tree that maybe that shouldn't come down?
Yeah, I think that's where, do we call that a heritage tree or something in there? But there's, you know, there's certain trees that might be just, you know, very distinct, like a, you know, a huge ponderosa pine on a property that, you know, that we would really want them to preserve and protect that if they can.
There's some language, actually, Dave asked me to put it in some time ago, if I can find it quickly. But it talks about the priority. And it says, let's see. Priority for tree preservation will be given to qualifying trees which provide beneficial shade, property or use buffering, visual prominence, or significant habitat. So that was sort of added because if you're saying, "I can't, my arborist says I can't preserve this tree," and we're like, "Holy moly, that's a big tree." Dave, the zoning administrator, or his designees have the option to say, "You gotta see if you can try to figure out a way to redesign around that tree."
Okay. Anything else from the board? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment.
Rebecca Norton, 530 Scott Avenue. Thank you very much for the great detail in your research. Two things. It was really upsetting what happened at the town pump. And so I went out there and actually told the guy, the project manager, to stop doing what he was doing. And it still didn't turn out anywhere near the way I thought it should. And so I, I'd like to know if we could use our own arborist to go and do site planning with people. Because the feedback I got, since I'm on the tree committee, is that even the arborist they hired wasn't really listened to as much as they should have been. And so I'm wondering if we could have that as part of our service, is that we actually take ownership of which trees we believe should be preserved and that we establish a baseline before any site disturbance is done so that it's consistent from professional to professional to professional. And then the second thing is, if, if it seems a little arbitrary for the, for our planning director to decide to waive things, especially when we know our whole community is going to get upset about losing any trees. And so I'm wondering if we could have a climate action component of this where if they lose trees as approved by the planning director, that they have to plant them somewhere, they have to give us the money to plant them somewhere else on city property so that the, the effect of losing shade and water retention and all that stuff is actually mitigated for climate action somewhere else. I think it's a great start, but I agree with Steve, there's loopholes. And I personally don't think we should be losing large trees at this point with the warming, if at all possible. So I'd like it, I'd like it to come under our own tree experts as much as possible because they know our urban forest inside and out, and they also know how our urban forest could work with private property as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Bob, anything on our tree preservation?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, are we talking about just tree preservation right now?
Sorry, no, we're talking about the whole landscape section.
Bob Horn, 151 Wedgewood Lane in Whitefish. I want to take you back a few years, back to the 2006, 2007 timeframe, when the city talked about a tree preservation ordinance. And all we had to do was start talking about it before people started phoning in and saying, "I'm gonna cut down every tree on my lot because I have a feeling you're not gonna let me manage my trees the way I want to manage them if this comes in." Some of you may remember from back then that the now vacant lot on the, be the north side of the Super 1 used to be heavily treed until we talked about a tree preservation ordinance. So anyway, keep that in mind because there's always that gap between... So anyway, keep that in mind, because there's always that gap between the time that council enacts something and the time it comes in. In addition, we had what few landscape architects that we had in town back then, warning us that that would happen and say, please, please don't do that. One of the concerns was that had us talking about the tree removal ordinance. I had previously worked in Washington State, in the Seattle area, and there was a lot of tree removal for view enhancement, especially vistas of lakes. I don't know, I defer to Dave and Alan or anybody else who's been around the lake, and do we have that kind of activity now? Is that something that we need to be concerned about? Something in there in the code that says just strictly removal of trees for view enhancement is somehow not allowed, or something like that. But anyway, it was a mess back then. We did raise a lot of ire, and a lot of people threatened down, threatened to cut down a lot of trees. Fortunately, only one guy actually did it, so keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Also add to that, that that piece of land was also what we'd consider affordable housing now as well. So not only did the trees go away, but all the homes went away.
And that, actually, there was another question I had, and I wrote it down, but I forgot to mention it. In this section, we reference community housing, where as a, as a, as a way out of some of these regulations for tree. I just wanna make sure that we are, that we've become more consistent when we reference, I assume we're talking about workforce housing, affordable housing, I don't know how many different names it appears as in our zoning requirements, but I, we need to get more consistent about it, and we need to reference it the same way every time, we need to have a definition of it.
Understood 100%. And that, the, as you know, we just approved the community housing roadmap, and that's the word we're going with now. So, so as we move forward with the growth policy, subsequent regulations, we're making sure that everything is consistent.
Yeah, we may have to come up with a definition in the zoning code if we're gonna use that term, if it specifically means, you know, deed-restricted workforce housing.
I think we, yeah, I think, I think we should. I don't make a note of that somewhere. That can probably be a zoning text amendment that can go through pretty quickly.
Noting.
Come up, come up to the mic since we're recording.
Think less than AMI 30% is usually the, what they say.
There is a specific definition of community housing in the roadmap. And it's, it's, it's housing that isn't being provided at affordable level. I forget the definition, but it's, but it's already there.
Okay.
And I just assumed that's what it was referring to.
Yeah, but it would need to be in the zoning code if that's, if that, we're referring to that same definition, or we're just talking in general about housing, so. And just, Bob brought up a thing about tree removal reviews. In our Lake Shore regulations, we don't allow that in the Lake Shore Protection Zone. But outside the Lake Shore Protection Zone, yeah, we don't have anything that specifically talks about that.
Yeah. And I don't wanna get too far off base here, but I know that there was somebody who was removing a bunch of big cottonwoods. Do you know anything about that?
Talking about on West Lake Shore?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they removed a bunch of them in the Lake Shore Zone, and that's currently, city attorneys are working on that, so.
All right.
If I can add, sir, I guess the one thing is, is when we start talking about removing trees, are we talking about for residential properties? Because right now, under the current code, we don't regulate landscaping on residential properties.
Right, yeah.
So, so that's the thing I'd be worried about, is these large houses taking out trees, we wouldn't have reviewed a plan for them to begin with.
I don't think we have a tree preservation plan for, for single-family housing.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, well, that's not the purpose, that's beyond the scope of what we're doing tonight, so maybe that's another council discussion that we'll have. Okay, any other comments or questions about this, before we move on to the next thing? Do you guys, you have enough direction?
Just to respond to one of Rebecca's comments, you know, we do have a city arborist, but she's, you know, specifically works for the Parks and Rec Department for city trees on city property. And if we were gonna have somebody that reviewed or looked at, you know, private development, we would have to hire a separate arborist on staff to deal with that stuff, because that's just not something in their scope of work or time that they have to do that. But, you know, we rely on somebody that's a professional, they get, you know, local professional, their own design and stamp their thing on it, just like we do any engineer or architect. I mean, that's typically how we set it up, and then put it on them to bring a professional forward and put their own credentials on the line to, you know, prove whatever point they're trying to make.
Understood. It's totally understood. But I, I think the point, the point taken is that, do we have, do we have a system where we get a picture of the property before, where we look at everything? I mean, usually we get a plan like that that shows where all the trees are currently, and then they put the buildings there as well, and show which ones have to come out, at least the plans that I've seen.
Yes, sir. So, so our, the requirements of our landscape plan that we now have says you have to mark existing entries that are proposed for removal.
Okay.
Now, we don't have that under our current regulations.
Okay, great, thank you. Do you feel like you have enough direction to go forward and bring something official back for a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks, Alan. Great work, appreciate it. All right, we will close off, close that agenda item from the work session, and we will move on to the growth policy update, process, marketing, and existing conditions review. Dave, is this you, Dave? Or did you give this to Alan as well? Oh, Alan, boy, you're a busy guy.
Throw me right to the lines. So, yeah, as you know, one of the things I'm doing is updating growth policy. I'm gonna talk a little bit about what a growth policy is. I thought I would do this just for somebody, the people that are newer, in case, although everybody in the audience is sort of a veteran, but I wanted to make sure I kind of quickly touched on that. Why we're updating it, how I've started the process, some of the observations I've made so far, the next steps, and then I'm going to present at least some portion of this presentation to, to the city council next week, just kind of depending on what happens this evening. But for those of you that aren't working in city planning every day, a growth policy is required by the state statute, it's required to adopt or amend any county or municipal zoning. So in order to have zoning or subdivision regulations, you have to have a growth policy. That's state regulation. It's an official public document, like I said, that's used in Montana, it's, it's used as a guide. So all of our regulations are supposed to be consistent with the growth policy. That's, that's the theory, is the growth policy sets the overall 10,000-foot goal of the city, and then everything that we craft is supposed to be following that growth policy. It's not a regulation, it's the official policy document, again, sort of the vision of the city and how we wanna get there. Zoning and subdivision regs, as I said, implement the growth, and it's also known as that the growth policy is kind of a Montana term, they're more known as master plans and comprehensive plans. In fact, there's actually some legislation going on right now, there's some discussion at the legislature about maybe changing the name. One of them I've heard is land use plan, which I'm not super excited about. I'm hoping they can steer towards comprehensive plan, which I think is a little more descriptive to what is actually happening. So the growth policy statute, it does identify what the minimum content of what has to be in a growth policy is. You can do more, but you have to meet certain things. I'm not gonna bore with all the details, but it talks about maps and narrative describing the character and the features of the community, and it talks about land use population, housing economics, there's a laundry list here. It says that the growth policy has to be reviewed and updated if necessary every five years. The, now, we, it's been a long time since we've updated this particular growth policy, but corridor plans and specific plans, such as the downtown master plan, are considered updates to the growth policy. The hope is here that we're gonna be able to start tying all this stuff together in a more cohesive way. Just to put things in context, I thought this was fun. So when two, during 2007, when Bob wrote this plan, this is where we, this is where we were. So George Bush is president, Apple released the first iPhone, Facebook had just become available to the public, and destroyed the world. Housing bubble started the recession, the bank bailout, Nancy Pelosi, Al Gore wins the Nobel Prize, and the greatest tragic event of our era, Anna Nicole Smith dies. So that's kind of to put things in context of where we were in 2007, when our growth policy was written. I'm doing a little comparison, again, I'm not gonna go too deep into the weeds, I just think this is kind of interesting to look at, what our demographics were. Some of this I got from the existing growth policy, some of this I got from the census, but population is 6,500 then. We were roughly 4,100 acres, median home price is $319,000, median income 48,000. Got the growth on there, total housing units 2,600, median rent $477, which is almost what I pay for my RV storage now. Then I've got some numbers of what Whitefish Mountain visits were in Glacier National Park. Now, to put that into comparison with today, we have roughly 8,500, now that's permanent residents, everybody knows there's more than that in the summer, when the non-permanent residents show up. The area has now doubled, and that is mostly because we've annexed Whitefish Lake. There was 4,000 light, and then we annexed a huge lake, and really, that's mostly what drove that huge increase in area. Median home price now is 1.3 million. And to put this, interestingly, in 2020, when the pandemic happened, it was $447,000. So between 2020 and now, it's gone up, what is that, $900,000? So no, I didn't buy a house in Whitefish. Total housing unit now is about 4,600. I'm gonna come back on that, the 4,600, there's actually, I've done a little more research on that, and I have a number I think is more accurate than 4,600. Average rent, I'm sort of skeptical about this, it says 1,200, that came from our housing needs assessment, but I don't think anywhere in Whitefish you can find a one-bedroom apartment for 1,200, just going off of the data that is there. Whitefish Mountain, so it went up by about 100,000 people, and Glacier visits went up by about 1.5 million since then. Now, there's, um, there's a lot of different theories about why this has happened, how we have grown so fast, and how things have changed so much. Just to put a little, inject a little of my speculation on this, it's what I'm calling the three Cs here. This is why I think things are so quickly, and that's COVID, California, and Kevin Costner. So to me, that's probably why things have happened so quickly in Montana right now. Okay, so 2007, here's the major Whitefish employers. Whitefish Mountain was the number one employer, I'm not gonna run through the whole list, but you can kind of get an idea of what they were. And if I move on to now, Whitefish Mountain is still our employer, it was double the people, it was 500, now it's 1,100. Most of all the employers that you see here are mostly comparable to what was in 2007, a couple of dropped off, there was a car dealership that dropped off, I can't remember what the other one was. I found this interesting, I haven't quite all the way figured this out yet. The first, so these are the fastest growing and quickest decline, and I didn't have Whitefish, it's hard to get this information, I was able to get this from Montana. So the, so the top three makes sense, fastest growing things in Montana, building materials, construction of buildings, and wood products. I mean, you know, surprise, surprise, if you haven't figured that out. Quickest declining, accommodation, which would be like the hotel industry, certainly due to the Airbnbs, full-service restaurants. The one I found interesting, I haven't quite figured out yet, there's been a discussion about that, is heavy and civil engineering discussion. I got this information from the Montana Department of Labor and Industry, so I raised my eyebrow a little bit on that, I'm not quite sure what that meant, I've heard some different theories, but I don't have a good answer for you. I put this up just to show in 2022 what the main occupation of Whitefish residents were, most of them are in management business and science, followed up by sales and office. The reason why I'm putting these up is to show you, so these are what the people that live in Whitefish are doing for a living, here is what Whitefish is offering. So the, the largest is arts, entertainment, and recreation, so that's, that's basically tourism industry. There's actually still a pretty large amount of employment in healthcare, so, so we're doing well with our primary jobs in that case, but, but then the other large employer in Whitefish is retail. So, so the, the jobs that people are working in, in Whitefish are not really necessarily the jobs that are being provided by Whitefish, jobs, housing balance is what that's called. Okay, so this, this will be a sort of fun, I have a lot of slides here, but they're gonna go quick, I'm gonna bombard you with data, but I think this will give you a real interesting snapshot of where we're at with the city of Whitefish. It's so, it's so far, so good? Anybody want me to stop before I keep going? Not losing anybody? Okay. So the state statute governing growth policies requires that a city, town, or county create an inventory of its existing characteristics and features using maps and narrative. And I put this little picture here, because what this is, the way I like to say this is if you're at a mall and you're lost, and you're trying to figure out where you wanna go to get to the food court, you have to look at a map to figure out where you are first. And this is the same thing with the growth policy, is if, we don't really know where Whitefish is gonna go, or what we wanna be, unless we know what we have right now. And that's not something we've done before. So the, the first thing is that I mapped all the existing planning areas and land use designation. So we have four different corridors in the city, what you see here. We didn't have those mapped, David was nice enough to give me a GIS, and I know how to use GIS, so I started mapping out the boundaries of what our planning areas were. One of the reasons I think this is helpful is under the new growth policy, we can have maps now that show you where all these areas are, and you can flip to them, and everything is more cohesive and put together, so it's easy to figure out what applies where. Right now, looking at the growth policy, you may not even know that you're in the Wisconsin area, or in the Highway 93 West Plan, you might have a problem finding that, and so, so we wanna make it easy for people to figure this out. Just, just showing you some pictures, these are the mapped land use recommendations. The downtown plan actually has its own land use categories, that's why I put this here, I'm not gonna go into that now, but we have these typical land use categories that we use in the growth policy, and then the downtown plan has its own. Looks like Dave wants to enter.
Oh, just gonna say, well, when the consultants did the downtown master plan, you know, they kind of did it in a vacuum without any input from our staff, and we had, and there was no steering committee or anything like that, so they used terminology that wasn't necessarily consistent with our growth policy.
Okay, so here's where the meat of this is, this is the existing conditions, and this is, this is what I've been doing for the last long months. I drove every street in the city, drove or walked, I mapped every use in the city at a parcel level, I compared this against Google Maps and property record data, and the reason why I did this is I wanted to make sure that I knew, first of all, I wanted to learn Whitefish, right? I just moved here, and I'm starting to get to know the area, so I really wanted to know what the communities were, and secondly, I wanted to make sure we were using real data. We, we've never really had this done before. So what I literally did was go out there and look and see what is actually built on that parcel, and I mapped that. Now, you can't really do that based on the information that Montana Cadastro Mapping has, if you go to their maps, it'll tell you, it'll say "commercial," but it won't tell you whether it's a car wash, a supermarket, a boutique, or a real estate office, and those have very different impacts. So I wanted to know what's actually out there right now. So this, what you're seeing here, and I know, I don't expect you to be able to understand all this just from looking at it on the screen, but this is the south side of the city, and this is the as-built conditions. What you're seeing in beige, and I'm gonna go more into detail, that's all single-family residential, the reds and the oranges and the browns are your more commercial, the stripes, and again, I'll go into this, is all multifamily. But the, the reason why this is significant is if you look at our zoning maps, our zoning map says this is what you're allowed to build here, and these are what the development standards are. And our land use plan, our future land use map says if you do something, this is what you wanna see. Well, what this is, is this is what's there right now. So, so the reason why I did this is, is Counselor Norton was talking about how we wanted to move forward with doing some updates to the zoning code, I wanted to make sure that I had a really good snapshot of the city, so that we, when we do this analysis, we know the way the city is building out, the way the city's not building out, and where the zoning doesn't work. That is the reason why I did this. So this is the south side of the city, this is the downtown area, again, I don't expect you to understand all the colors, I'm just giving you an example. I'm certainly happy if you want to, if you wanna geek out on this, I'll geek out with you as long as you want on this, this is the kind of stuff I love to do. This is the north side of the city. Now I'm gonna start showing you some of the findings that I came up with. So the first thing is that I subtracted Whitefish Lake, the parks, the right-of-ways, the open space, and the public land, all the stuff that's really not buildable land. And what I, what you see here on this map, this is, you know, plus or minus, this is the developable land in the city. This is a city that is, with the, the only exception is that I did include the schools on here. And the reason why I did that is because I have seen schools sell property for development, so we can take them out, but I did not include parks, the lake, right-of-way, all that, and we've got about 3,050 acres of developable land. To put that into context, it's roughly 38% of the land within the city limits, which makes sense, because you're taking out the lake and all that. This is land that is presently built with single-family detached. Again, this is land that actually has a single-family residence built on it, about 1,850 acres, and of the developable land, that's 60% of the land in the city, is built with single-family detached. Multifamily is 271 acres, which is just shy of 10% of the land. I'm gonna come back to this, because this really sounds out of bounds right now, but it's actually not as bad when I circle back to why that is. Are you gonna say something, Dave? Okay, so commercial, 312 acres, that's about 10% of developable land, and I included industrial and light industrial, it's basically any land that's being used to make money, is, is for the most part, or goods and services is what I called commercial land. Did you have a question, sir?
Yeah, does that include like the downtown with the residential above and?
Yes, sir, and I'm gonna circle back on that.
Commercial below?
Yep. Sorry? What'd you say, 100%? Well, we had, so 60. Well, we had, so 69, 10, so I don't know, we were at 69, 79-ish, so 80, that's about 80 acres there, or sorry, 80%. And here's the last one, is vacant land. This was actually kind of a surprise to me, I did not know that there was this much vacant land, as did a lot of people on staff. The one thing I will say is some of that land is owned by one person, right? Who I think we all know who he is, you can look that up at the north, at the top of that map, that large black one, that's owned by what's called Lookout Ridge LLC out of Texas. So is it really vacant land? The way that I did this is I looked at land that's actually buildable land, that's owned by a public entity that would meet the minimum lot standards, and that's what I call vacant land. But just for this exercise, I also subtracted that out, because, you know, he basically bought himself a huge buffer. If we were subtracting out all of that other land, that takes us to about 19% of our developable land is vacant land.
Now, there's a couple spots on there, like the corner of Edgewood and Second Street, where we have a development plan approved for that, and it's currently still vacant, but there's a couple subdivisions too that show up on there that haven't been built yet, but haven't been approved.
Yeah, and I didn't, thanks, I did not, didn't have time, or the staff, because it's me, I didn't go through all the entitlements to figure out what's already entitled and what could be built, I just said, is it a buildable land, is it vacant, and that's what I mapped here. I could do that analysis, but I don't have a lot of staff.
That's okay, this is way above and beyond, and some of us have been here long enough to recognize the parcels that are being, that are already under, that already have a land use plan on them.
Figured you were going to be more familiar with this than me. Okay, here's some interesting things now. The way that it works is all of the addresses in the city of Whitefish have a point data, right? One point that equals an address. And you can also get this information off of the state's cadastral website, they have all that information. It's not entirely easy to use, but what I did was that I subtract, I took all of the land that I knew that residential development was built on, again, not zoning and land use, where it was actually built. And then I ran an analysis of all that point data to see where are all the addresses that are in that, and that gave me some number of point data. Then I kind of went through it for a few hours, and I tried to look for obvious mistakes, sometimes there's just double addresses or whatever. So I did the best that I could, and I'm going to come back to this, but what I've come up with on an estimate is about 333, 40 single-family detached, 2,068 multifamily, 119 mixed-use. And that was back to the question about the housing above, the way that we got that number, first of all, I went into the downtown, I looked, and I looked for the buildings that looked like obviously they had residential, then I talked to the utility clerk, and I had her give me all the residential water taps on the second floor of the buildings. So I'm confident that this 119 is accurate, if not slightly more. If you look at our needs assessment that you got last year, it talked about roughly 9,000 units, that was in the, that was in the Whitefish area, which is a census tract, so that wasn't just Whitefish, that was only in some out in the county, but right now, I'm talking about housing units. So as everybody's math teacher told them, you should check your work. So what I did was I looked at the 2020 census, and the 2020 census says that we have 4650 units. And then I also looked at the yearly reports that you see every year, that talks about what was built, and that number came up with 617 additional units, and I got, so I came up with this number of 5267. Then I'm not sure whether or not the census included those mixed-use numbers or not, but the point that I'm making was, when I, I was actually expecting my numbers to be way off with what the census was, and I came really in about a 3% error. So what that tells me is that I'm relatively confident that this 5,500 total housing units is very accurate. Now, the thing, the thing I think that really is telling about this is, if you remember in the beginning, I told you that 60% of our land was single-family residential, and 9% of our land was multifamily, but if you're looking at density, because there's so many units, you know, you can have a, what shows is one big lot, but you can have 300 parcels on that lot. So we actually have 60% single-family detached and 40% multifamily, which is really not that bad of a mix. It's not quite balanced, but it's a lot better than you would think. Obviously, the price is a whole nother issue, but the actual number of housing units of other types of variety of housing was far better than I was originally expecting. Okay, this is the one that I'm not, I would say the numbers are not going to be right, okay? This is short-term rentals, what I did is I had Claire give me all of our legally-registered short-term rentals, these are the ones that have told us that they're doing this, and the ones that have told us that they're doing this are 346. Now, pretty sure everybody knows there's going to be a whole lot more of short-term rentals than 346, but again, it's really, I can only go on what I'm given. What I have figured out is that within all of the zoning districts that allow them, we've got about 1,250 residential units that could be short-term rentals, that's if they were all built out, 100%. If you look at what I have here, again, showed us registered, there are about 6% of all the units in the city, and 22% of, oh, and then the 20, roughly a little less than 25% of all the housing units in the city would allow short-term rentals. So if you were to build them all out right now under the present zoning, 25% could be built out as short-term rentals. That's, that data I'm confident with, because I counted all the numbers, I looked at the points, and I ran them.
That's if you built out every vacant parcel of land, or?
If you were to take every existing housing unit in a zoning district that would allow short-term rentals and uses a short-term rental, then 25% of the housing in the city could technically be short-term rentals.
And just note that it's only about a quarter of them that are zoned for that that are actually doing short-term rentals, a lot of them are long-term rentals, even though they're in those zones.
Right, gotcha, okay.
Okay, so any questions so far? I know I'm killing you with the data, but again, it's more just eyebrow lifting than anything else, there'll be a test at the end, so take notes. Community character, this word is thrown around a lot, it's in our growth policy, I've heard it talked about, the existing growth policy, thank you Bob, has some, has a definition there about what community character is, it talks about two important things in particular, it talks about the diversity of residential types, and it talks about whether or not it's in scale with the surrounding neighborhoods. So again, this is what our existing growth policy talks about with community character. Reason why I did this is, again, we throw this word around, and I really wanted to quantify, what does that mean? Because as we move forward with the growth policy, I'm going to say to people, when you say "let's preserve the character of Whitefish," what does that mean, right? Want to quantify that. When in doubt, I go to the American Planning Association Dictionary, and the APA Dictionary talks about the image of a community is defined by factors as, and I've listed all this stuff. But a fun little exercise is as I was doing all this mapping and walking around the city and freezing, I actually started looking at what is the character of Whitefish. I'm just going to give you a couple of little baselines, so you can kind of get an idea of where we're starting with. The first one I think is really interesting is this, if you look on the right, that is the lot size density in the city, so the darker ones are the denser lots, the lighter ones are the less dense lots. That doesn't really tell the story of where housing is, because you can have a huge lot with a ton of multifamily on it. That's why you have the map to the left. The map to the left is actually a housing density map. All that point data that I ran that analysis on for housing, where the dense, highest densities of housing are is what you're seeing in the yellow in this heat map. They somewhat correlate, but I thought it was kind of interesting that you could see where are the highest densities in the city. I think this is important as we move forward with the growth policy, to sort of know how is the city already developed out. So far, so good? This is a map, I actually got this from the state of Montana, I got information on the ages of all the structures in Whitefish, because again, when we talk about community characters, there's actually some language in our existing growth policy that talks about our existing neighborhoods and what neighborhoods should be preserved, that's going to be up to the council and the citizens to decide what that means, I'm just presenting you the information. This map here is showing where our oldest structures are. The next one, I don't expect you to be able to see it that well, I apologize, but what you're seeing here is the building footprints of buildings in the city that are on the, on the right, you can see them in purple, barely, those are, those are structures that are greater than 50 years in age, the ones that are yellow are the ones that are greater than 100 years in age. I thought this was really important, because we can look at where are our oldest structures in the city, you know, is that areas that we want to focus on when we're talking about community character. Most of the oldest, as you would probably expect, most of our oldest structures are east of Spokane, south of railway, and basically north of 8th, and then we have some older structures in the railway district, as well as some 100-year structures over like west of Wisconsin and north of, no, I always forget that road.
Central.
Nope, right next to the railroad tracks, north of railroad tracks. Well-
Edgewood?
Edgewood, thank you, Edgewood. So what you're seeing here, the yellow footprints is showing you where our 100-year-old structures are in the city. The reason why this is important is, again, when we talk about community character, what does that mean? I wanted to come up with some examples to be able to show to the community, to the council, or anybody as we're moving forward, this is an example of what, of what character areas could be. So what you see here in yellow, these yellow polygons, what this represents, and this was from visual analysis as well as running analysis on the ages of structures, is that what you see in yellow is fairly intact, original structures that have consistent architecture. So those are, those are areas that have not really turned over yet, that have architecture and structures that are relatively the original ones, so when you're talking about, you know, as close as you could come to a historic district, or whatever you want to call that. The red, obviously, is the downtown, that actually has its own character. The purple polygons are some of our more open and rural areas in town, that almost feel like unincorporated Whitefish, the hashed areas, the red, those are gateways that probably should look at some of their own consideration in regard to how to preserve those areas, or how do we address that maybe with an overlay district or something like that. Did I have some comments? Because I see you guys smiling and-
I'm just looking at my neighborhood.
What color is your neighborhood?
It doesn't have a color.
It doesn't have a color. Doesn't mean it's bad, it just means these are the collections of buildings, again, and understand, this is 100, you know, this is, this is quite subjective, okay? This is based on, what did I see there, what are the edges of the structures, what do they look like? Are there places in town? One of the exercises that Dave and I talked about when we moved forward with visioning is to ask the community, what do you think are the distinct neighborhoods in Whitefish that actually have their own character? I kind of did the same little exercise to become familiar with the town. So here's the Monkey Ranch, and this is one of the reasons why we're still kind of pausing a little bit until we move forward, is as you probably already know, there's this Governor's Housing Task Force, and there's also just a furious amount of pending legislation right now going on, and the legislature, that could have major impacts on the growth policy, as well as really Whitefish. So there's this task force, there's mixed opinions on this housing task force, which I will not get into, but some of the things that they're looking at is saying that you have to allow 4,000 square-foot lot sizes, there's discussion about whether it's everywhere or a percentage of the town, I don't know yet, they're looking at maybe requiring that we have to allow some amount of multifamily everywhere, or some percentage of the town, reducing parking requirements. One of the things that I found actually most worrisome is there's still some language in there about limiting us, not allowing us in some areas to be able to limit height to less than three stories, which I think could be very detrimental to some of the neighborhoods. There's some discussion about prohibiting design review, I think it's four plexes or left, less. There's discussion right now about whether or not short-term rentals should be allowed in all residential neighborhoods, which would argue, if you're trying to help provide more housing in Montana in general, is it a good idea to allow every house in every zone district to be used as a short-term rental? Not my answer to the answer. Then there's also some discussion requiring whether or not you actually have to have a referendum in order to initiate or to change a growth policy, meaning that in order to do anything with a growth policy, you actually have to have a citizen vote. These are some of the things that are being discussed. I don't know where they're going to land. I'm getting a ton of stuff flying through my computer every week, and I'm just trying to keep up with it, and communicating with Dave, and we're monitoring, and we're doing everything we can to put our opinion out there, but David and Goliath.
Did you, did you read the letter to the editor today in the, in the interlake from, I forget who it was, one of the legislators?
I did not see it today.
It was about, the reason why housing is so expensive is because there's too much regulation. He's from Bozeman.
Oh, that's basically what the, that's what the, in general, that's what the Governor's House Task Force says, is get rid of government, it'll make housing cheaper, so depends on what side of the fence you are on with that one. All right, so next steps, what Steph is asking for the planning board tonight is we gave you a list of potential names, right? So in general, comprehensive plans usually have like a catchy name, it's a branding thing, and I give you a list of, pretty much every, almost every, almost every community has some kind of catchy title for the name of their growth policy. I listed Blueprint Denver, Envision Idaho Springs, Buildings Beyond. We had people internally give all kinds of suggestions, I got a ton of them, I submitted a list to you of what they were, staff voted what we think are the best names for the plan, the planning board, being the steering committee for the plan, we thought you should be the ones that actually decide, you don't have to take those names, you can, you can decide on what you want to do tonight outside of that. Beyond that, depending on what the, what we decide is going to be the title of our plan, we then are going to reach out to the community on a logo contest. So we thought it was a good way to get the community involved and start giving some ownership to the plan, so we'll talk to the local high schools and the art teachers, and have some contests where you can do a simple logo that would go on the plan, and that could be on t-shirts and sort of the whole branding thing, and then we would like have an awards, and we could give them a plaque, and maybe a gift certificate, and credit whoever did the artwork on the front of the plan. Again, we thought it was a good way to kind of reach people that maybe generally wouldn't care about this excitement that's called government bureaucracy. Then, we tend to, we tend to have a kickoff meeting, probably in April, and this will be where I'm giving somewhat of a similar presentation to this, and just talking about what is a growth policy, what do you like about Whitefish, what do you not like about Whitefish, what do you think are the distinctive neighborhoods. Following that, then we'll start getting into our visioning, that would be more into the summer. And again, I've provided you a tentative outline that I looked at today and realized you can't read it all, but basically, it's kicking off in April, and if we, depending on where it goes, it'd be wrapping up somewhere in the winter, the early part of 2025. We figured it would be about a two-year process, it's quite a feat to do a growth policy, especially since it's been 16 years since we've written it. With that, I know I just threw a lot of stuff at you, but comments and questions?
Good work. The, one thing to note, I think, in the last couple of years, this place is not unique in the challenges. You know, you look at Bend, you look at McCall, Idaho, you look at Truckee, you look at all these places, similar problems and similar changes in the last couple of years. So this is not a vacuum, it's not different than a lot of places, which is good in some ways, that there's other places to look at and see what they're doing, problems they're having, and how they're confronting them. Another thing to note is the character of these boom towns, which just pretty much would be considered that at the time, it's like a town I grew up in, McCall, Idaho, same thing. The character of that town was the downtown, all the housing there was these houses that were skidded in from a mining place on logs, they didn't have foundations. So the character of that town is similar, these old functionally obsolete houses, basically.
I was originally in Boise, so I know-
With vermiculite in the walls and all this stuff, so I think it's good to note that, but it's definitely, you need to make sure that we realize what these were intended for when they were built.
That's a good point, because there's a lot of, in the old neighborhood around the high school, those were called dam houses, they were removed when they built the Hungry Horse Reservoir and skidded over and slapped on a foundation.
Houses of opportunity, yeah.
You still see some robot houses down there.
I own one of those. And what was the term for, what was the term for the house that you live in?
The map, it had a yellow border on the city beach.
Fairly intact.
Fairly intact, yes, that's, that's it, that's the word I was looking for.
That's shockingly appropriate for my house.
Functionally obsolete, I think it's another term.
Me too.
Is that not a correct description? I was looking at-
No, it's fair, it's fairly intact, I would say.
I mean, like, you know, mostly original structures, original neighborhood, hasn't really turned around, very similar character, that's what that is.
Lots of layers on the flooring is where I'm at right now.
Yes.
Those are like ages on a tree, where you just kind of count the flooring layers, and you can tell how old it is?
The carpet was a fun one with the leak.
Okay, well, and that is the character of this town, though, for those of us who arrived here a certain number of years ago, and I think that's, you know, that is one of the things that we're really trying to figure out how that fits in, and that, and, you know, I, we have to, we really have to think hard about that, how important it is, how to preserve it in a way that is, that is fair to everyone, including those who want to update their fairly intact home. So it looks to me like you would like us to move forward tonight with a name for the Uh, so, it looks to me like you would like us to move forward tonight with a name for the plan, or at least have some discussion about it?
That is one of the items, and the other one is just how we wanna run the meetings once we start the process, and we've laid out some options in there.
Okay.
Um, you know, obviously, we're very cognizant that you guys are volunteers, um, you don't wanna drag the meetings all night, um, we, you know, one of the options is starting a little earlier, starting from five to six, have that hour be about every month, be about the growth policy, and then if someone had comments on whatever we talked about, then they could come and talk at the public, you know, the beginning of the meeting and the public hearing. Um, we could start the discussion from six to seven, and have that all growth policy in the, the normal meeting would start at seven. Or we could have it on an additional day, you know, and it might, some of that might depend on, you know, what the topic of discussion is with the growth policy, if it's something more major, or there's gonna be more public input, we might have it on a separate day. Obviously, the visioning sessions, the kickoff meetings, all that stuff would be on a separate day, but we just kinda wanted to get a feel from the board of, you know, what you guys are comfortable with, um, knowing that, you know, in some cases, it might go more than an hour or whatever, but we have to, you know, be cognizant of the normal business that we have to conduct with everyone else's stuff, so.
Okay, so those are the, those are our two action items from us tonight.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's, let's just have a few comments in general, and then we'll open it to the public, and then we'll make our decisions, um, just as a process thing here. So, uh, first of all, um, Alan, what an amazing job you have done. I can't imagine how much, on, not just on the ground work you did, but also backend mapping, that's, it's pretty impressive, the amount of work you've done, and that kind of information will be very, it'll be vital, uh, when we get into looking at how we're gonna restructure maybe our zoning, or whatever we end up doing. Um, the only thing I would add to it is current projects that we have going on. For example, I know that, um, one of the things that we're gonna be looking at, uh, current like street projects, because as streets upgrade, sometimes that may change, uh, you know, it may, like, for example, uh, Caro is gonna be updated at some point in the next year and a half or so, and, right now, that whole neighborhood, I live out there, is, is zone duplex, and there might be places that are closer to the actual updated corridor that would be maybe in for a zone change. So looking at existing projects, and maybe kind of having like a two- or three-year plan of this street's gonna get updated next, does this zone, when that gets updated, what is the zone, what should the zoning look like on those areas? Just, just a thought, uh, of mine. Um, but again, just thank you for this tremendous amount of work you've put in, I can't believe you've only been here six months, um, and you've done that much work, so, thank you.
I don't wanna work myself out of a job, however.
Any other general comments about what, what we've heard tonight?
Um, yeah, I, I really appreciate the information, and I am wondering if we can have a copy of the slides, just to, uh, not like a hard copy, but, um, if we could have a copy of this to refer to, I think even just in consideration of, of proposals, it would help us to have the data that you brought together. Sometimes when we hear, you know, kind of blanket statements or assumptions made by, you know, the public or developers, it would help us to have those percentages available, um, just to refer to, if that's possible.
I can provide you the PowerPoint if you'd like it, or any other maps I can create for you if you'd like that.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, and then, just a side note, I think I'm getting a little too excited about the marketing opportunities, um, here, that is my world, but also, I'm wondering, um, just looking back on the changes, the legislative changes that ma, that were made that impacted our legacy homes zoning right after we, uh, approved that, I'm wondering if there is any public communication from the city about how, how Whitefish specifically would be impacted by the, the bills that are proposed in this legislative system?
Yeah, we're constantly sending letters to the, our legislatures and commenting on the different bills, and taking positions on the ones that we don't support, and we also have the League of Cities doing that, and, uh, um, Montana, uh, planners are also doing, all the, doing that stuff, and so, it's pretty, you know, most of the bad ones are getting pretty unanimous things, but who knows how they're gonna shake out and what's gonna get adopted, we just don't know, but we're tracking them all, and we're commenting on them all.
Is there any opportunity to, um, share those positions with the public at all? I don't know if that's allowed.
If you, yeah, every, every council meeting, we get an update from the city, um, the city manager as to where we stand, and you can read it, it's in the packet, actually, the bills that are there. You can watch, you don't have to show up, you can watch it online, it's recorded, too.
Okay.
So we do get, the council gets updated every week on, or every meeting on what's going on, and what's passed, and what's coming up, and where we stand, and the city hired a lobbyist, so we have a lobbyist in Helena to lobby for our position on, on different legislation.
That's great, yeah, that's just a lesson learned for me, realizing that, you know, the city think, or some members of the public think that, you know, the changes to legacy homes were from the city or from us, and just acknowledging that difference was out of our control.
Okay.
All right, any other comments in general? Okay, let's open this up for, okay, yeah.
Commercial, is it Linville? I apologize if I didn't pronounce it right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, again, if you wanna contact me, I can either send you the PowerPoint, or I can give you, if you wanna see better views of the maps, I can create any of these maps for you that you think would be helpful.
It wouldn't hurt, I mean, I don't see why it wouldn't just be public knowledge if there's a way you could get it uploaded to the city website.
We can, we can upload the PowerPoint to our growth policy page when we create that.
Right, we are gonna be creating a webpage, and we'll put it on there, but in the, I can email that to you.
Yeah, just email it to all of us, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll open up for public comment. Any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bob Horn, again, 151 Wedgwood Lane. Um, I wanna talk just for a few minutes about the approach, um, and, and by approach, I'll relate to you, the approach we took with the 2007 growth policy versus, say, Kalispell. We were updating or doing our growth policies at the same time, of course, Whitefish didn't have one until we adopted the one in 2007, actually, early 2008, but, uh, I remember talking to Tom Gents, who was the planning director for Kalispell for a long time, and his approach was, oh, I've looked at the population projections, I've got 20,000 people moving here in the next fifteen years, I gotta plan for those people. You know what, we didn't take that approach. We took the approach that we wanna plan a community, a great community for the people that are here now, we're going to grow, we're gonna plan for that growth, but we're just not gonna look at numbers and say, we have to make all of this land available, we have to run out there and take all the land on the other side of, uh, I forget the name of the road now, but, all, all, all the way out to the east, and a lot of people thought we were gonna do that. Uh, we didn't do that. I guess if, if you wanna make it simple, we took more of a, a quality approach instead of a quantity approach, and whenever we went out there, okay, we did neighborhood meetings, we did visioning sessions, and quality and character of the community time and time and time again was what people say they valued most about Whitefish back then. So you may find that still true, uh, you may not. The other thing that I wanted to just talk about a little bit is, um, I gather from this conversation that it's gonna be the planning board that actually works with the staff and/or consultants in putting the initial draft together, is that correct? Okay. Respectfully, I don't recommend that. In most of these, like, in, in Jackson Hole, Jackson-Teton County Comprehensive Plan that I was involved in as planning director for the town of Jackson, uh, City of Colorado Springs, uh, and the 2007 growth policy, we actually used a steering committee, uh, thirteen to fifteen, oh, in Great Falls, uh, thirteen to fifteen-member steering committee to work with the staff and the consultants in putting that draft together. On that steering committee was a representative of the planning board, a representative of the city council, but you could also have folks, you'd have a broader representation, you'd have a broader cross-section of the community sitting on a larger steering committee than you would have, uh, just with the planning board alone. And the other thing was, you were just talking about your meetings, coming early to do the long-range stuff, and then sitting for the next two or three hours, looking at conditional use permits and PUDs? I don't think so, you're gonna get burned out very, very quickly, okay? And, and that steering committee, I met with them early and often back in the 2006 and 2007 timeframe, sometimes we met two or three times a month, and so we had a different group of people, like I said, sitting on the planning board and working on those, those PUDs and those conditional use permits that came across the table. I intend to write a letter to the city council explaining that, and just putting it in writing, and let them consider it, uh, cause I, I really think that's the way to go, and, and I would encourage you to just think along those lines. Not saying you guys can't do it, but you'll be burned out after two years if you were. Uh, the other thing I'd like to say, I, I agree, I mean, Alan just, just did a great job, uh, he had six months to do it, that's great. Uh, when I took this job in May of 2005, um, my city manager wanted the whole growth policy done in about six months. That didn't happen, we produced the first draft in sixteen months, that was still record time. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Bob, I do remember those days well, those when I first started. We certainly appreciate all the work you did in that first, first growth policy for the city. Rebecca, any comments?
Thank you. You gave me a ton of background information, Bob.
Good night, Bob, see ya. Uh, okay, so we have a couple action, a couple things we need to take action on, um, let's, I'd like to just address the second one first in light of Bob's comments. Uh, would you like me to bring this back to council and say, hey, do we want, are you sure you want the planning board to be in charge of this? And get a, get a definitive answer from council, or do we wanna move forward with one of these three options for when we wanna do these? I mean, there's nothing that prevents us from doing either or.
Yeah, and those are just options, I mean, we can come up with a different thing, if you guys are okay with a, you know, another night where you have more time, you know, I mean, I think that in the early stages, it's probably, you know, an hour might be plenty, because we're just gonna start working through the beginning of the process as the plan goes along, and there's certain chapters that we need to review or go through much more detail, then we can, you know, schedule longer meetings, or maybe have an alternate night that, that works for you guys, but.
Here, come on up, Bob.
Thank you. Steve, if you're gonna talk to the council about that, um, you might wanna wait and see a draft of my letter first, I can produce it pretty quickly.
Okay, that'd be great.
Sure.
Sure, thanks, Bob. What are you guys' thoughts about that?
I think I agree with Bob, this, it is something that we should possibly bring other people in, if possible, just some of these CUPs and some of the things we've looked at have taken hours, anyway, so if there's another option, we should look at it.
Okay. Rebecca, um, sure, come on up, Rebecca, and then John.
Rebecca Norton, 530 Scott Avenue. I, I was talking to Bob about this earlier, and I think we're, we're okay letting you guys take the burden of, of, um, pushing us through this, because as long as it's forty-five minutes to an hour at the top, when you do your established meeting, we know that we're gonna be, um, moving it forward. One thing that we've seen a lot is, um, complaints that we're not getting the growth policy updated in a timely manner, and, and people have mentioned that it might lead to us to have legal challenges because of that, um, and then, we know that this is done through the statutes, um, Columbia Falls did it, and I think it was less than a year that they were able to upgrade their growth policy through the planning board. So, when, when Bob was hired, we had tri-city planning, he came in as our first planner, you know, and everything had to be started from ground up. We've done tremendous amounts of planning since that time, and so it's mostly, I think, a refinement of where we find our loopholes, and I think you guys are really well-suited for that, um, plus, we have wonderful staff that's working on it, so, I, I think you should try it, and then later, if we need to get, um, more public, more diverse public input, we can always do that, but I think having the structure come through you, and also not having our staff overextending too much more, where they know when they're gonna be working on the planning of our growth policy update is nice for them, too, because it's quite a big project. So, I think you should try to keep it within the planning board, um, where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. And just, just so you would know, the timeline on putting together a twelve or thirteen panel, person panel, would be months of, of work from, from the council and staff to just create the standing committee. The other thing that just struck, struck me as Rebecca was talking is that we have a lot of other volunteer boards that probably have some insight into some of these things that could come, like, part, part of the growth policy will be the bike ped, updating that part of it, and we have a whole committee on that, so inviting them in.
The Climate Action Committee for that portion of things, we have a housing committee that's being formed, that would be a great committee to be, you know, involve a portion of that, too, right?
Yeah, so I think maybe, maybe I'll, maybe, let's take action on one of the, on when we wanna do the meetings, I'll still bring it up with council and see what they say, and then we can, um, but, but if, if we, if council decides, no, this is gonna be a planning board thing, we can refine who comes to each meeting, and, and planning staff will invite the people that need to be there, um, but let's, let's make a choice about when we would like to have these meetings, I think. Yeah, absolutely, John, go ahead.
I agree with Rebecca that we have a fantastic staff, and Alan, I would just like to say, awesome presentation, thank you and welcome, but also, uh, we sort of, as a city, have a track record of establishing steering committees for this type of thing, Wisconsin Corridor, 93 South Corridor, Housing, Strategic Housing Committee, there's numerous examples, and my only concern with not, um, at least more seriously considering that avenue, is the perception of lack of transparency, and then also, uh... I don't know, I guess just the lack of transparency. It's something that we've traditionally done. I'm not suggesting that it has to be that way at all, I think that everyone sitting behind this desk here is certainly capable of making these decisions, but I also agree with Bob that it's a, it's a pretty hefty load, um, if we go that avenue with less public input, are we, you know, inviting criticism on ourselves unnecessarily by doing so?
Thanks, John.
I had one more thought, too, if we're, if it's open to discuss the structure of it, um, and I know we will have public comment throughout, obviously, and involvement, um, just one idea, um, to keep with the cadence moving forward, that the planning board has, that is a good regular meeting schedule, but maybe an idea to bring forward, um, we could look at, instead of putting together a twelve-person steering committee and pausing this for several months, maybe we could start moving forward with some of the technicalities, and then have like a focus group, um, that comes in, you know, after we've made a little bit of headway and kind of, you know, outlined where we're going, and then we could have like a community focus group that we met with outside of our regular meeting timer, something, just an idea.
Okay. So, I don't think we've really gotten any closer to what we're supposed to do, but it's okay.
I support a meeting before a meeting, so there's an end, a start time and an end time, yes.
Yeah, if I had a, it would not be a separate day, and it would not be earlier, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we did, you know, an hour, yeah, an hour of peer discussion by the board, and, you know, there might be some comments that bleed over into the regular meeting at, you know, the beginning of the meeting, cause there's public comment at the beginning of every planning board meeting, anyway, um, but trying to keep it succinct, so it didn't overburden you guys, I mean, and again, you know, state statute, it says the planning board is the board that's supposed to put together the growth policy. I know, I mean, it is extra work for you guys, but on the flip side, you guys actually get to do some planning, and it's not just looking at projects, which, you know, I think is stuff that at least other, some members of the planning board have expressed interest in, in the past, that they could be even more involved with that, and you, the other thing is that you guys have a more of a pulse on what's going on in the community, you see all the projects, you know what's going on, you've, you understand land use planning, um, you know, there's not a big learning curve for you to understand the concepts that will go under the growth policy, and, and the other part of it is, we've already done the corridor planning, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel, the whole community, it's not a giant whole new plan for the whole thing, we're integrating the corridor plans that we've already adopted, the downtown master plan we've already adopted, the main, you know, item of contention is gonna be the outlying areas that haven't, don't have planning, the little neighborhoods around, and how are those, you know, gonna grow, how is our interface with Flag County gonna occur as we grow, and where are the areas that are most likely to grow, cause we have the, the best roads and infrastructure and sewer and water there, versus the areas where we really can't, because the infrastructure isn't, you know, adequate, but, you know, more than anything, you guys are gonna be a sounding board, you know, we're the ones that are gonna be doing most of the work, we're gonna be bringing stuff to you, getting your feedback, going back, and, you know... know, bringing it back. And it's just feels like the, you know, to be the most concise and consistent and efficient, that you guys would be the best board for this.
All right. Well, we'll move forward with that, we'll move forward with that for now, for sure.
But there's always, as Allison said, there's an opportunity to have maybe a subcommittee or a citizen focus group, you know, if there's a certain topic that's becoming a struggle that, you know, that you could expand that and, you know, have met one or two of the board members, you know, and work with the subcommittee of some different people, volunteers or whatever, so.
Okay. Point taken.
I was just going to clarify, I'm a proponent of the five to six time period because I don't like to stay up later than like nine or 10.
John?
I have no objection to the five or six either, but I do have a procedural question regarding that. If we open the meeting at five, is that what we're suggesting? Are we going to have a closed-door session between five and six?
There's no closed-door session. It's always going to be open to the public.
So we're just going to.
The first hour will be the growth policy.
The new time will be five.
We'll start the meeting at five, the first hour will be all growth policy and then the regular meeting will start at six.
And then so if the growth policy pre, let's call it the pre-meeting meeting, is not an item, an agenda item, then how much discussion is allowed for public comment?
It just depends. So typically, yeah, I mean, so city council typically has work sessions that involve public comment before our seven o'clock meeting. So sometimes, sometimes we have to close it off and, but then there's always, the first agenda item is always items on the, items not on the agenda.
Right.
That people can continue their comments at that point. And then whoever's in charge of the meeting could say, okay, we'll hold, you know, if you, if you didn't get to speak yet, you can, you can bring up your comments in that first agenda item on the meeting agenda. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So the only major difference would be our start time.
Would be, it could be our start time or we could do, as Chris, I think Chris kind of made a motion to start at six, to keep the regular growth, the regular.
That was the second option.
Start time, yeah. Because our normal start time is six. You wanted to keep it at?
I could do earlier, too. I'm just, I know in the summertime, five o'clock feels like the middle of the day.
It does, yeah. It's only one day a month.
Summer's coming.
I thought about summer.
It's going to be all summer.
It's going to be the rest of our lives.
Right. That's what I'm, that's what I'm usually going.
Just keep in mind that not every month, we may not have a topic and we might not be ready. Some stuff's going to take us a lot longer to compile and put together, you know, so.
I'm sorry you can't read that schedule. I, it didn't print out well, but you're not going to be talking about this every, I mean, you might chat about it, but you're not going to be tasking on this every month.
Okay, oh, all right. Okay, so I'm hearing, keep the regular meeting time, or, I'm sorry, I'm hearing five o'clock. Is there a second to that? Change the meeting time to five o'clock.
Was that a motion?
I move for 5:00 PM.
Make it a motion. I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion on it? Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, so we will have our meeting at five.
So if we have items to talk about on that, we will schedule a 5:00, 5:00 PM work session for that, yeah.
And if something feels too hefty for an hour, we'll just have to schedule an extra day.
Yep.
Okay. And then, I'll rush home from school to get to this meeting. And then we have this list of names. Whitefish Forward, We Are Whitefish, Vision 2045, Plan the Fish.
Real quickly on that, so we've got different dates in here that people have suggested. So we've got 2045, we've got 2040, we've got 2035, we've got 2030 down here.
Generally, it's 20 years.
A 20-year plan. We figure if it's getting done in 2025, then 2045 is 20 years.
So that's the real.
My hope, it says that we hope it's done by 2045.
I will be here for that. I will say, I do like the date idea in the name. I think it kind of adds some future.
Why are we overlooking the mother of all Whitefish plans? That was one of the options.
Why aren't we looking at shredding the nar?
That was one of the options that we don't seem to be talking about.
I mean, there was one of them that, like Wendy, Wendy really liked the Whitefish, Whitefish Off Pissed, but I figured everybody would just call it Whitefish Pissed Off.
Yeah. Peast.
You don't have to, you know, you can mix this up however you want.
Yeah, quite frankly, I think we need to get some, we need to get a mark, somebody who's got a degree in marketing to.
I work in that.
Okay. So let's defer it to, let's defer to Allison for the first go on this. Which one of those?
Well, like I said, the mother of all Whitefish plans. No, I'm just joking.
Shredding the nar.
I would start the conversation, I think, I appreciate the numbers because it does kind of tell people what we're planning for or toward. That's a good point. I like We Are Whitefish, too, and I'm envisioning it with like diverse faces of Whitefish and places and.
Sounds like high school cheer.
Okay, that's a good point. And it, but it kind of makes everyone feel like they're a part of it instead of like we're planning for someone else or something else.
Inclusive.
So I think, yeah, I think that's kind of nice.
We are Whitefish.
We are.
I reached out to Lisa Jones and Brian Schott to see if they had any ideas. I'm not real fond of any of them, really, I'm sorry. I don't, I just, I don't know.
No ghost.
No ghost. I think we need to have the name of the city in there. I think we need, I think we need the name of the city in there and a date, but other than that.
Name of the city and the dates?
Yeah, and something else, I don't know.
Or the fish.
The fish. I don't know.
Vision.
Vision.
Vision Fish?
Or like Imagine Whitefish 2040, maybe?
I think we might need a little more, I think we need more discussion.
Future Fish?
Future Fish?
Future Fish 2045?
This is, this is a bar conversation.
Yes. This is a bar conversation.
I was just about to say.
Can I move to postpone?
You can move to post, you okay if we, do we need the name?
The only comment I would say about this is, is we're also trying to move forward with a logo contest and if we lose a month, if we want to try to get the schools to work on it, we're pushing out towards the summer.
Fair enough.
I like Future Fish with a date.
Future Fish with a date.
For Fish 2040.
Future Fish 2040.
2045 and.
2045.
I think we have to be less.
I like that.
I don't think this board gets to make any final.
I think we have to be less Trout Unlimited, like we can't, like Fish, it's very, like, the Whitefish has to be a full name.
I think so, too.
But I, yeah, this is the discussion.
History in this town.
The what? Stump Town?
Stump Town?
What about Dave and Alan opening the logo contest to a name contest to the community also?
Yes.
I mean, that was an option we thought about. It just was going to, it'd take longer and we wanted to start the branding and the outreach when we were going to do the kickoff meeting, which we're trying to plan for, for April. And so.
You guys want an answer tonight?
Well, we don't have to, you don't have to decide.
Ideally.
You know, you could punt to the city council.
Maybe we should punt to council.
You know, but, you know, it could be something generic, I mean, Whitefish Growth Policy 2045, I mean, that's, but we just thought something catchy might make it, make it more fun. You know, Karen suggested the Plan the Fish, kind of like the Ski the Fish, which I thought was kind of cute and funny, but maybe it, you know, it could, could be like the top and then it would say, you know, Whitefish Growth Policy 2045 underneath, you know, so the part of the name, or whatever you choose, whether it's Future Fish or whatever, but.
What's the big idea?
You know, what's the big idea? Yeah, I don't know.
Whitefish Resilient.
I don't know.
Shred the nar.
Shred the nar, it's good.
I think we should punt this one to the council, honestly.
Good luck.
Get on the, come up on the mic, Rebecca, if you're going to make comment, because we are recording. Thank you.
Sorry, Rebecca Norton, 530 Scott Avenue. I think this is too hard for the city council. But I agree, I mean, there's a lot of really good ideas, but I, maybe we should just leave it to the marketing people. I mean, We Are Whitefish, that's a nice kind of inclusive concept, but I like, you know, Whitefish Vision 2040 would be okay. If you're going to do a whole branding, though, it might be good to have the marketing people kind of help with that, too, so.
Leave it to the pros.
I mean, and the other thing I wanted to say is, if you guys take on the growth policy, you're, it's not all up to you. We're all in this. We're all be, we'll all be working on it all the time from here on, so, so don't worry, you're not out there on, you know, the people deciding our future alone. We are working on it as a community. You're just the holding space to make it happen, kind of.
Okay, I came up with an idea. How about Vision Whitefish 2045?
Love it.
Nice.
Good enough?
Yep.
I think it's catchy.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the name of the growth policy, Vision Whitefish 2045.
I will second, I'll third it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this topic? If you come up with a better idea between now and Friday, well, today's Thursday. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. We have a name. Got it?
Vision Whitefish?
Vision Whitefish 2045.
The Fish in Vision. We got it.
Vision Vision.
Vision.
All right, I think that's it. We are adjourned. Yeah, thank you.